Hello and welcome. You're viewing the Citizens Journalist Podcast Mesa County Compass that brings you the news that you can use from a different point of view. I'm Ruth.
I'm Lisa.
And together we are Mesa County Compass. Our goal is to create an informed, current, active citizenry armed with facts. We will be covering what's new, what's new to you, what it means to you, what you can do about it, and provide you access to the decision makers when we can. Good afternoon. We're here with Mesa County Compass and this afternoon we have Robert Ballard who is running for city council in District E against Randall Wrights. And we want to hear a little information about what it is that he is all about and why you decided to get into the running. So, Robert, if you'd give us a little bit of that information?
So, Robert Ballard, my background is I worked for Alpine Bank. I'm also a proud member of the military. Been National Guard for 16 years. I'm currently a company commander, organization that my family is very proud of. I have a loving wife, Ashley, and we have three awesome kids. You know, my family is very proud of our community and that's part of the reason why I'm running is because my community came out and asked me to. I had family, I had friends, I had people that just knew of me coming out and asking me to run because the people of Grand Junction right now don't feel as though they've got a voice and they're looking for anybody that is willing to sit on city council and listen to them. And we have, you know, one, maybe two that are sitting on city council right now that are willing to lend an ear, but really we do need a city council that's more representative. So, I want to make Grand Junction better. That's a big reason why I'm running and so I see the best way to do that is to actually listen to the people.
And what are the issues that you feel the strongest about that need to change or that city council needs to listen to?
You know, every single time I talk about running for city council, the very first thing that comes up is Fourth and Fifth Street, right? So, Fourth and Fifth Street is on top of everybody's mind and again, it's what's been filling all the news and they're talking about moving into Seventh Street and beyond. If it were up to me, you know, and if it were up to those small business owners that are downtown, they would just go back to the way it was. And we're not talking about getting rid of biking downtown. We're not talking about getting rid of, you know, pedestrian traffic downtown. What really matters is making our traffic and making our street system make sense, having well-designed street system. The other thing is public safety as well. You know, we need to empower our law enforcement officers to hold criminals accountable. And then me personally, you know, one of the things that I see is we need to make it easier and more affordable to buy a house in Grand Junction. I have an older son who owns a house outside of city limits because it was more expensive to buy here in city limits. So, and the way we do that is we empower builders. We let builders build, we make it easier and cheaper for them, and we do what we can as city council to facilitate developments so that way it all makes sense.
And why do you think they haven't facilitated development?
You know, there's always this overreach of government and it just kind of stacks on itself. You know, we've got special projects that are going up, like they want that, so Fourth and Fifth Street and Seventh and some of these other special projects go into this concept that I keep hearing about known as the 15-minute city. And so, for the user, for the viewers that maybe haven't heard of that, the 15-minute city concept means, for one, first priority is to discourage vehicular travel. The second priority is to make everything within a 15-minute walk, anything that you need is within a 15-minute walk of your home. And, you know, it kind of goes to this utopian society, this utopian idea that they've been trying to push in Denver and in Boulder. Problem is, is that the people of Grand Junction, they don't want that. It doesn't work for them, it doesn't make sense for them, and the people of Grand Junction have resoundingly rejected a lot of those concepts. And so, we need to, like I said, we need to listen to the people and we need to, we need to retain the values that we have here in Grand Junction and on the Western Slope that I believe are the last vestige of what Colorado used to be, you know, so that's...
And what are those values?
Well, it's that small-town values, right? Like, we know our neighbors and I'm walking down the street, I wave to people and they're friendly. We, again, have good law enforcement. And like I said, we're holding criminals accountable and we've got affordable housing. And not affordable housing in the idea that government subsidies are replacing affordability, but that it's just more affordable to buy a house, so.
And how would you do that?
All right. So, as I said before, allow builders to build. What doesn't make any sense to me is when a developer has made plans and says, yep, we're going to build a bunch of houses here. We make it more difficult for them. I'm on the planning commission and we say, all right, well, you need to not only have good access, which we want, you need to also make sure that you've got good, excuse me, all right, back up. So, I'm on the Mesa County Planning Commission. I don't know if I specified that.
You did not.
Okay. So, I'm on the Mesa County Planning Commission. And so, when developers say they want to develop, we put a lot of barriers in front of them and we say, yes, you've got to have good connection to right-of-way. That makes sense? We've got to have good sewer, we've got to have good water system, all of that stuff makes sense. And then we start tacking on things that maybe don't make as much sense. We have, you know, increased impact fees, which they're talking about increasing up to 37% just to pay for their unfunded projects that they've got. We put regulatory burdens on them that make it to where when somebody submits a plan, it takes now two years for them to finally break ground on that. And all of that time costs our developers money. And, you know, we like to say, well, these developers are greedy or the builders are greedy, and they're not. They're trying to provide a service that's in high demand here in the community and their incentive to provide this service and provide these products is the money that get off of it. So, they're not raking in hand over fist, they're not taking advantage of the people that I see. What I see is they are being limited and in order for them to make the profits that they need to make, they're having to increase the cost of housing, so.
So, what would be some of the regulations that you would hope that, because like you said, your son bought in the county as opposed to the city. So, what would be some of the regulations and what would you do with the impact fees? Because I know Diane Schwinkie said, you know what, we have always had, since those impact fees were implemented, there's an inflation rate in there already. So, we don't necessarily need to increase the impact fees.
Yeah. So, I would agree with that. I would agree with that. The impact fees that they're looking at right now are, should, and what I've been told, already have the inflation built into it. And so, the inflation adjustments shouldn't be that big of a deal. And if they're, let's say, for some reason, we don't have it set up to where there's an inflation adjustment, meet only that inflation. However, the impact fees that they're trying to pay for right now have a direct linkage because they talk about it in the meetings, are directly linked to their budgetary shortfalls. We, right now, on city council, have a shortfall for the next four years where they're not going to be able to make their budget and that's a problem. And you can't just blame it on development not paying for itself because that's the whole idea of percentage taxes, is as the economy grows, so does our revenue. And then we also have other taxes, you know, the initial building fees and the other permits that go into it that are supposed to pay for. And then we also, and this goes into the regulations, part of the regulations that builders have to follow are like, okay, well, we don't like the way this roundabout design is, so now we want you to move it 100 feet over here and for an arbitrary reason, and that's now going to cost you another $100,000 in redesign fees or something to that effect. So, again, we just need to relieve some of that burden off of it. And I can't name every regulation that needs to be eliminated. I can't name all those, and that would be irresponsible too anyway because, you know, you have to analyze them and before tearing down the fence, you've got to ask, why is that fence there? But I do know that we don't need a fence every five feet.
Which makes you wonder if the builders aren't funding such things as our Fourth and Fifth Street, as well as what they have to fund for sewers and streets and sidewalks and that kind of thing. So, that kind of double-dipping?
Right, you mean that the builders are, like, in the impact fees are paying for Fourth and Fifth Street?
Yeah, are beginning to see some kind of connection there, it seems.
Yeah, so...
Because we don't have budget enough to go ahead and do these projects. So, where are we going to get the funding from?
So, the one pushback you'll always get is that impact fees are supposed to only pay for new and improved infrastructure. They're not supposed to pay for existing infrastructure. However, we all know that budgetary reasoning can, is somewhat fungible, right? So, if I build, like, so I live on Orchard Mesa, so if I build a new development east of my house, like in kind of East Orchard Mesa, and I raise impact fees on that development over there, but we know that the street over by the city market over there is in dire need of repair, well, then I can say that development that's getting put in East Orchard Mesa, all those people are going to have to go over to city market to shop. So, that's where the impact fees come in. I mean, and I don't know if that's exactly what's happening, but you can see how the transfer of impact fees can go into special projects like Fourth and Fifth Street because that's new infrastructure to pay for growing, a growing area, you know?
But then we have new infrastructure that takes away streets and puts them down to single lanes for a growing community. Not making sense.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, it goes back to 15-minute cities.
Exactly, exactly.
I agree. Yeah, and, you know, back on Fourth and Fifth Street, I live, again, I live in Orchard Mesa and I have to go through downtown in order to get to the hospital, right? This isn't an option for me. And so, I view Fourth and Fifth Street as a main thoroughfare. And what most other municipalities do with main thoroughfares is they separate the main thoroughfare from the pedestrians. And what the 15-minute city concept does is it combines them because, well, if you make it more difficult to travel, you're less, or make it more difficult to drive, you're less likely to drive through downtown. So, I think what we should be doing with Fourth and Fifth Street is trying to help separate the pedestrians, explore different ways to separate the pedestrians from the high volumes of traffic. And I think what we had before was working out pretty well. I used to walk up and down Main Street every single day. It was part of our afternoon routine and we never had a problem crossing Fourth and Fifth Street. There was a good crosswalk there and it was easy to maintain.
And that's the whole thing that comes back to every time, especially with Abe Herman, is the safety, safety, safety. And I guess my question was, was who all of a sudden decided it was unsafe?
Yeah. That's a good question. The street that had the most incidents, and they actually, the Grand Junction Sentinel just published an article on, they're exploring changing Seventh Street as well. But the street that had the most incidents was Seventh Street. And, you know, I might be ignorant of some statistic that's out there that shows otherwise, but I wasn't tracking very many incidents happening on Fourth and Fifth Street. And I would drive it every single day, three times a day. You know, I'd drive in, I'd drive home for lunch, and then I'd drive back for work and then I'd drive home after that. So, I'd drive it all the time and it wasn't like we were seeing an accident all the time. Seventh Street was a little different story, but again, what's the common factor there? We have a situation where we have more interaction between pedestrians and high volumes of traffic. So, I would say, you're right, I would question where we're getting this safety message and I don't think it's an authentic message.
Because that's always my question and oftentimes, too, you know, you can, the reason it's called an accident is because they didn't do it on purpose. And you can't control people, you can say, and it's the speed thing, we've got to slow everybody down, but that doesn't account for distracted drivers or you have a baby in the backseat that's crying and all of a sudden, you know, they, something happens or something drops or whatever, it's not all just based on speed. I don't know how they can say that 35 miles an hour for four lanes, when you have two both ways, should be fine. Even 37 miles an hour should be fine.
Right. I 100% agree. Downtown or on Fourth and Fifth Street is 25 miles an hour. So, you will have 30 mile an hour traffic going through there and we know how people in Colorado speed, so we're going to have 35 mile an hour traffic going through there. If you want to reduce the speed going through downtown because you see it as a safety hazard, you know, reducing the speed limit should be your number one goal because we know that people in Colorado speed almost 10 or 15 miles an hour over the speed limit. So, reduce that speed limit and you can make them slow down that way. What they're trying to do is they're trying to social engineer. And social engineering is a term that I use all the time in information security. What it basically is, in my context, right, is we use, bad guys use social engineering to trick users into clicking on phishing emails, right? So, what they do is they take the human behavior that already exists and they insert their scam into that human behavior in order to get a click. What they're not trying to do is change your behavior. They're not trying to manipulate your behavior in order to somehow change your habits and then get you to click on it. They're already using the habits that exist. The social engineering that they're trying to do here is that, is that second type of social engineering where they're trying to change you, they're trying to make you go against your human nature of, you know, this is a main thoroughfare and we're just trying to get right on through downtown. They're trying to slow you down using things like, oh, there's a person about to cross the road, right? That's not natural. That puts a lot of fear in not only the driver's mind, but also the pedestrian's mind. It's a social engineering technique that's irresponsible when it comes to public safety because it does put a lot of people in danger and also it's not really effective. We're still going to see people speeding through downtown. We're still going to see people being put in danger and it's unsafe.
Okay. Well, that is, that's very well, that's very well said. So, another issue that I know is, for Ben, is a huge one, is the Resource Center. What do you think about how the homeless population is being dealt with and what would you see that we could do differently? How money is allocated? What the role of city council actually is in dealing with that issue? And how they could make a difference, or can they?
So, as far as the Resource Center is concerned, the implementation of it, the location of it and like how they're managing and what they're doing going forward, I think it's just, it doesn't, it wasn't executed very well. And I think the, also, the overall concept of what city council is doing is they're reacting to homeless population and they're trying to put temporary fixes in place instead of trying to resolve the root causes of it. And so, what that turns out to look like is that looks like us spending millions of dollars on resources that we're giving people, we're feeding people and that's good, we want to feed people, we want to clothe people, and we want to give people opportunities to get showers and good rest so that way they can go look for a job and get out of the situation they're in. But we're giving them a bunch of things and then also we're just moving them around the community. And so, you know, it was that they were in the middle of downtown parked and then we're going to move them down to the park just a few blocks down, and now we're going to move them into the median in between two, you know, high-speed avenues, you know, avenues, and now we're moving them back over to the Resource Center. So, we're just moving them around town. We're not helping them, we're not getting them out of the situation they're in. And my thing is, my opinion is our overall goal as a society, not necessarily as city council, but I guess the goal for city council should be this, but as a society, our goal should be to get people that are homeless integrated back into society, integrated back into the community, get them the help that they need. And city council's role in all of that is holding the drug dealers accountable that are victimizing these homeless people. Because right now, a lot of the resources that we have require sobriety and for good reason. But they, the people that are needing it the most are unable to get the sobriety because they've got drug dealers that are constantly pushing fentanyl and meth and all these other harder drugs. It just makes it to where, that's a huge barrier between the resources they need to get joined, rejoin the community and themselves, so.
So, what do you think about the way programs are designed to help them to get that sobriety? Is there any areas where that could be encouraged or that you would med out the monies differently than they are and have some accountability? This is how we know if this particular program is effective?
That's a good point. I don't know, I'm not on the boards of a lot of these nonprofits. I would think, though, that a lot of people that are contributing to these nonprofits, for the homeless particularly, would be asking questions of like, okay, give me a story of somebody who has started getting, accessing services at your organization and a year later, where are they? Right? And if I'm not seeing constant turnover where it's like this person is now housed, this person has now got a job and they've transitioned out of homelessness, if I'm not seeing that transition happening, I would pull my money, right? Because it's like, what are we doing? Right? We're just, we're just giving away food, right? We're not actually solving the issues of homelessness. And it's, it's a complex issue. I'm not trying to simplify it in any manner, but we should expect results. And I don't know if, I know for a fact that when we donate to city council, or, excuse me, when city council donates to the nonprofits, I don't think that those questions are being asked and I also wonder if the nonprofits are actually seeing these results, but it'd be interesting to ask those questions.
Okay, Ruth, it's your turn. I just, because I've got, I can just do it.
All kinds of things buzzing around in my mind. I'm trying to focus on any of them, but I'm thinking of places like Catholic Outreach and Joseph Center and those that are actually taking those people and doing something with them. Why did we put the housing resources in? To double up on what is already being offered. And they're not low barrier, they expect results, especially Catholic Outreach. We've been with them several times here on this podcast, between Beverly Lampley, who is now deceased, and God rest her soul, and then Jody. Yeah, Mona Highline and Jody. All of them say, come to us, we'll take care of them. We have a plan, not like the Housing Resource Center, which doesn't have a plan. You just go there and spend your days and then you leave at night and terrorize the town, if you will. I don't know what they do, where they go, but it isn't safe for them in any case. And like you say, there's a drug dealer on every corner, there's a pimp on every corner. We're not safe in this town.
And so, with organizations like Catholic Outreach, you said that they have a expectation of...
Oh, my gosh.
What is that?
Well, they have over 600 volunteers that work for Catholic Outreach. And like Bev said, when they come in, they will, they have all sorts of resources available to them. We saw the meat and food that they, didn't they say they serve 1,700 people at lunch a day? And it was the cleanest facility when you went in, they had brand-new clothes, they can come in and get new clothes every seven days if they need. And they have the day center that's kind of part of them where they have washing machines, they have showers, they have telephones, so if you've got a job. But what Bev said is, when we come in and we meet with somebody that's in financial stress, that is going to lose their house, we say, we don't want to just pay you rent for a month.
For sure.
We want to find out what's causing you to not be able to pay that rent and work with you to create a plan.
And I have seen that from Catholic Outreach. I know that a lot of the resources that are on their website even talk about that kind of stuff as well, gives them a clear path on what they expect of you, so, yeah. So, I guess, and I don't mean to reverse the roles on this, you know, on your question, you said, what is it, what can we do to incentivize them to go seek that help? My answer for the city council would be, we need to hold the drug dealers accountable because it is victimizing them. When it comes to nonprofits, what are some of the things that they're seeing would be good as well?
Right. And that was one of the things that all three of them had said. When they opened the Resource Center, they didn't go to the nonprofits, they just said, we want you to come here and come to, and do our thing. They didn't come to the table and say, you know, what's already being done and how could they, they all fit together?
Yeah.
Like Bill Wade out at the...
Homeward Bound.
Yeah, Homeward Bound, wonderful program for having people overnight and, but everybody stay in their area where they're, they have their expertise, like Mona Highline with the young moms and with the older ladies that are, you know, she calls them her golden girls. But you see, like, the other day, she had to ring the bell, we've got somebody that's got a home and they're on their way and they've been a success story. So, you know, I think that part of that is just saying, what's going to be our tool to measure the success and how far does the city need to go?
Yeah.
Now, what is that lane?
And so, one of the questions that I get a lot of times is, because what is that lane, right? Because I said, the city needs to stay in their lane. And one of the things that comes up a lot is the question of like, what is the role of public-private partnerships? And I think the answer to that question is the public-private partnerships, especially when it comes to homelessness, is answering the chicken or the egg paradox. And so, that's where I could see city council helping out, like, if one of the nonprofits wanted to take the lead on like, something like a resource center, like, hey, we've got an idea, we want to provide this resource center that has an end date, right? And that has a better resource. We just need, for example, a vacant lot, right, to put our center up at. Like, okay, yeah, we can lease this to you for, you know, an X period of time while this other building's going up, you know? Those are, those are good partnerships that I think that the city can participate in. I don't know if the city should get in the weeds of providing the resources that nonprofits already are providing, because I think as an investor, as I was saying before, if I'm donating my money to a nonprofit, I'm going to expect to see results, you know? And I don't think you get that same accountability from a city government.
I think you're right.
I don't have anything further that I can think of right off the top of my head.
Well, I know that one of the things that you said that I really admired was that you have, you took a long time to make this decision to run because you wanted to make sure that you could actually devote the time that's necessary and hear what people were wanting and needing and evaluate that. So, I guess there's two parts to this. One, what do you think prepares you for the role on city council? And how will you make sure that you know what people think? How will you get their responses and understand that? I'm going to give, I do this all the time, Robert. It is so bad, it goes like 14 questions.
Trying to keep track.
One of the things that they did when they did the city survey is, or even on the 2020 plan, is the question was, do you like bikes? That's innocuous. That doesn't mean I'm biking on Fourth and Fifth to interfere with traffic and that I want you to create a one-lane traffic.
Yeah.
I think that bikes are great exercise and I think that if you want to ride your bike that, to town, and you feel like you can make it there and back, I mean, for most people, like, if you were to ride your bike down to your job on Alpine, then you don't have time to spend with your family because you're going to have to ride back and it's going to take you a lot longer than it would in a car. So, I guess that my question is, is how are you going to make sure that you're getting the questions asked that need to be asked and so you're meeting with the public and understand that? How are you going to do that?
Would it be like round tables or things like Cody Kennedy is doing on Tuesdays and Thursdays at the coffee shop? What are your ideas?
Yeah. The, I don't have the luxury of being able to do like Tuesdays and Thursdays, you know, coffee with, you know, Cody. You know, however, I do really encourage those types of opportunities. For me, you know, it would be probably like a Saturday, you know, twice a month or round tables or town halls. That's something that I don't see around here very often is town halls. I'm more than willing to sit down and have a cup of coffee or even just have a beer with a constituent and talk about the issues that are really impacting them. And then the thing that is supposed to already exist for city council to listen to them is the public comment and is also the emails that, emails and letters that are sent to city council. The one question you asked was, what do I have that prepares me for that? And the limited amount of time that I've been on the planning commission, on the Mesa County Planning Commission, has taught me, or the limited amount of time that I've been on the Mesa County Planning Commission, I've learned... Or the the limited amount of time that that I've been on the Mesa County Planning Commission, I've learned that um. Uh sometimes you have to make decisions that the public might not necessarily like, because they're based and rooted. In principles and values and you have to be able to articulate what those principles and values are. You have to be transparent about it, which is something that I don't think the the city council is doing right now, if they were to, and this, I heard this from a business owner recently. Uh they said if they wanted to come out and say, we're trying to do a downtown Main Street street mall, right? Uh and and if they would just come out and say that, we can work with that, we can, we can. And and I think that these business owners are giving city council more latitude than they deserve, but. Uh you know, they're they're just looking for transparency, they're looking for clarity, they don't wanna be lied to and so when you have public comment. When you have emails coming in and and if it is something that um. You say, we can't go this direction, you have to be able to articulate why, but really, when we sit on city council, there should be very few things. Because of the nature of city council, there should be very few things where you got majority of the the community coming out in force and saying, we don't wanna do this, we think this is a bad idea. Most things that come in front of the city council, you should be taking that seriously, um you should not be ignoring them and. And uh you should be rethinking some of the barriers that are preventing you from taking their their comments seriously, so again. In in summary, I I I don't quite have the capacity that Cody Kennedy does, but uh I definitely want to entertain um uh. Those styles of of open dialogue, um I have a forty hour uh a week job, so I have to to. Um prioritize that, they put food on my table, um uh however, um definitely. Want to make sure that the people feel heard when they come to the public comment and I want them to make sure that they feel heard when they send in their emails. And if there ever is a time where you disagree with them, make it clear um. What principles and values that are important to the community are preventing us from making those decisions.
Okay, and one last question, what do you think is the role of city staff and city manager? In your in city in city government, I mean, should they be the one proposing all of the ideas? This is a complaint that Dennis Simpson had, he said that when they when they come to us, it's the finished product. And it's a yes or a no, instead of being involved all the way along and just not even having the budget. Because I know he said he requested the financials, cause that's him, he is an accountant and he said. I requested at the end of twenty twenty-three to know what where we were financially. And he said, I requested that in June and hadn't heard anything. And he said, I had to do a a core request to get that information, being a member of city council.
You shouldn't have to put in a core request to get the information, you need to make decisions. Sorry, I didn't.
No, 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 and that's what I'm saying is, you know, if you don't know where you are budget wise and you're only given three three shades of vanilla to vote on. You know, what, where does that come from and what do you think should be the role that those two? Entities play with each other.
So as I mentioned, I'm a company commander of uh an infantry unit uh in the National Guard, so. Means I'm in charge of a hundred and thirty-two people, I'm in charge of all the operations that happen with that company. All the way down to the vehicles and the supply, personnel, the administrative, and then also the operations. Um but I only drill once a month and maybe two weeks a year, maybe a month, however that works out. Uh and I rely heavily on full-time staff in order to to do things, there is not a thing that they do. That I am not answerable for, right, and I make it very clear to them that. When you are acting, you're acting on behalf of the commander, uh on behalf of the command team. And you can't just go out there and do your own thing and do something that would be against uh the the will of the commander and the command team. Very similar on the staff of the city council, they work for the elected uh officials. And and the city manager is the head of the s- that uh. The way I I have, way I understand the the council manager type style of government. Is that the the manager is a chief of staff for for the staff. And still has to run by all decisions through that city council and my understanding was the reason why. Uh city council is dedicating um all these Mondays to workshops, so that way city council can have a say. And a a a progress check on a lot of these projects, so to me, it is concerning that they're presenting finished products. Um without any consult from city council, if that is happening, um then anything that I'm not fully. Understanding on, it'd be a no vote, just because I'm not gonna put my name on something I don't understand.
Yep, that sounds great.
Sounds good.
Anything you wanna tell us, I know you need to tell us where we get in touch with you and and what your needs are and that sort of thing.
Absolutely, so.
And and maybe, sorry, just a little bit about how you see your your opponent, Ken Scissors, the differences that you see. Randall Wright, sorry, I put you in the wrong district again, you're not running at large, I'm sorry. So Randall Wright, what do you see are the differences in how you two see things?
Yeah, um so uh sum it up. My values are, I I care about uh the western slope, the western slope values that are. You know, that small town atmosphere with resources that we have, I want to bring in um. Good industrial jobs that are going to employ the people that are here, I want to uh. Bring back a flourishing housing market and then also just streets that make sense. Uh the the biggest difference between myself and my candidate is that uh in appearances, first of all. Um the values that uh direct his decisions are purely based off of big. Concept ideas that are coming out of the front range or big concept ideas that maybe even come out of California and aren't really designed. To facilitate what the the people of Grand Junction want and that's the whole role of city government is to facilitate. The 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 desires of of the people of Grand Junction, um. And so that that would be the defining difference is I'm more concerned about what the people need in order to succeed and. And he's more concerned about the the bigger concepts that are happening at the Colorado state level and I'm not not a fan of that. Um as far as uh what I need, these these city council races are a challenge, right, and and uh. We've got a lot of work ahead of us, these these races are very short, less than two months out and so um. I need, for one, I've got a a uh campaign kickoff on Wednesday, the twelfth, it's gonna be from five thirty to seven and. All are welcome to come to Mountain Air Roasters, should have some coffee, hot chocolate for you out there as well and then um. Also, we'll need revenue to pay for the mailers, we'll need revenue for uh signs and. All the other things that go with the campaign, like advertisements, door hangers, um you know, Facebook ads, all those things, so we're gonna need revenue. We're estimating that we're gonna need thirty thousand dollars in order to be competitive in this race, uh and so. Um fundraisers are really important and then when we get closer to uh when the ballots are out, we're gonna need door knockers as well, so. Uh if if you are able and capable to get out in your community, talk to your neighbors, word of mouth is still. The best thing for uh these elections, get out there, talk to your neighbors, talk to them about the issues that uh you care more about. And and most importantly, if there are issues that I'm missing on, if there's if there's anything that I. Uh don't have solid opinions on or maybe you think I should reconsider, I do invite um any feedback as well, because that's the whole point of of. This campaign is the people need to have a voice on city council and and so I'm definitely open to that dialogue, so.
And where would they give you that voice?
Yeah, so uh you can email me at ballardforGJ uh at gmail dot com. Or you can go to my website at uh ballardforGJ dot com, so.
And I do have to reiterate again, just because you're not in that district E, you still can vote for Robert.
Hundred percent.
So as long as you're within the city limits. Very important, very important.
Absolutely, yeah, and I appreciate you guys having me on here, um and I I really do appreciate you guys' podcast, cause you talk about issues that uh otherwise. Don't get talked about outside of maybe like the 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 dinner table, so I really do appreciate you guys having me on.
Taking your Saturday and doing it. You've been watching Miss County Compass, this is the facts as we see it and the truth as we know it, you decide.